This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, January 21st, 2022. This is the regular meeting of the trustees. We're meeting in the large meeting room of the library, Main. My name is Steve Imming, president of the Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call, introduction of attendees. Call the roll. Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And I am here also. We're expecting Tom, so we'll see if he comes along. Also in attendance today is Jeff Collins, library director, Lexi Rowling, assistant library director, Casey Shipley, recorder, and
she is, she's coming.
And we will have Amber here, Amber Carlson, Youth Services librarian soon. Also in attendance are Jennifer Williams, HR Operations Manager, Tracy Moore, Development Officer, and Marion McGuinness, our City Council liaison, and Jerry Stalich, the president of the Friends of the Library. Missing? Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. They have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Malavika. And it reminds me, let me also mention that since Tom made the motion, he is in attendance. Okay. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Harry Nunn, call for the vote. Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. There's no one here to sign in, so we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is reports and communications. First item there is Friends. Jerry, looking for us today?
I have a couple items, and I, some of it I don't want to take away from maybe the director's report, so I'll cut it real short here and see if there's any duplication there. Friends did vote to provide funding up to 15K per year for the next three years in support of Patron Point software implementation, so we will be pursuing that. I don't know if there's more detail on that particular software that must be shared as part of this meeting. Also, we are actively pursuing an unpaid pledge. I won't name names or anything, but 20K that has yet to be realized from the fundraiser for the board, for the library renovations. We've got the right people on it, not leaving it. And we know people. But it is important for both our funding and certainly for the good of the library to make sure we recover those commitments. Very quickly, we had about $18,600 in additional invoices that were paid out fairly recently for various activities that the Friends helped support at the library, including the literacy programming supplies for that, celebrate the printed word, some funding to help with that, support staff, partial wages, support that the Friends provide, and some funding for our Books for Babies program that was a check for $675 just recently written. So we have that. And last but not least, maybe the July meeting of the Friends will include a very detailed update on our funds and investments from our representative from Quincy Bank and Trust and certainly anybody from the board here. Most welcome to come sit in on that. Jeff's always there. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate you, your report, and all the Friends do, support the library. Next item under reports and communications is committee reports. Finance, Tom?
Well, budget recap that we got as part of the meeting today, it was for 91% of the year, and our expenses are around 88% to 90%, so Jeff's been doing a good job of managing the flow of funding. So it does also, budget recap, I want to point out that that always shows the levy balance, which is an important number, $1.6 million that we've accumulated over the years from the special levy with the library.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Next item is personnel. Amanda, anything from the Personnel Committee, or Craig?
Yeah, we do. And it has to do, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. It has to do with the evaluation process we previously set up for Jeff. And I sent through an email about this previously after we spoke with Jeff. And you'll probably recall that evaluation plan at the time that we set forward was we were asking Jeff to provide the board with updates on his progress toward the goals and objectives at three months and at six months. And then we were all going to do our annual evaluation with regular board surveys and the staff surveys and all of that stuff in November, because that kind of ended up being the time period we needed to get it in by even though it was nine months. Okay, so after that time, it recently came to my attention that there's actually a city imposed six-month probationary period. And so we need to get a report over to the city at the six-month point. And because of that, we're kind of changing the timeline of our evaluation. So this is what we came up with at this point. This is how we're planning on having the evaluation process changed. So nothing's going to change with, Jeff, you already provided your three-month progress, and then we'll have you do it around a little bit forward of the six-month point, just so that we can have that in our arsenal when we're doing our review. And then we're going to have the board in August, just, oh, actually, it's everyone, sorry. The board, the staff, supervisory staff, everyone's going to do what usually would be our annual one, but we're going to do it at the six-month point, so in August. And then at the nine-month point, which is the annual one that goes to the city that we're required to do every year, we're just going to have that be board surveys. Does that make sense to everyone? I know that's a little convoluted, but we're basically doing what we do at the year mark at the six-month point so that we can get that important information over to the city for the probationary period. And so at the six-month point for that evaluation, I talked to Jennifer. Jennifer's going to have the staff survey sent out kind of end of July and have those returned so that the board can have those before they do their surveys. I'll be sending out the board surveys August 1st, having those, a deadline of August 10th to get those back to me so that we can have that, all the information compiled and ready for the August meeting. I can, I'll send an email out with these changes afterwards, just so you have them in writing. But if anyone has questions, they can contact me or Craig about it.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yeah, problem. Thanks.
Okay. Next item under committee reports is advocacy. Malavika?
I do not have an update. I was unable to go to the DEI meeting last month with all the graduation and all that happening in my house and running around. So I do not have a DEI update to share with you all. Regarding advocacy, I will share more details as things happen. But the Giat Museum is planning to do a few events with their new exhibit that is going on. I think it's the Breck exhibit. And there are quite a few, I mean, you know, things, items in our library. You know, how can they do something in association with us, the public library? But as information comes out, I will be sharing email contacts with the library so they can be in touch.
Thank you, Malavika. Next item under reports and communication is director's report.
Great. So thank you. Just a couple of updates to the report that was included in your board packet. The first is the construction on Main here. I'll give you a little bit more information about that. The developer is seeking to build 120 units in a four-story structure. And initially, it looked like they're not planning on doing any off-street parking. The city zoning in downtown does not require them to provide any off-site parking. So for our purposes realistically, on-street parking will likely be harder to come by for patrons that are coming to Main. The two-hour enforcement might help a bit. They will do, have to do some streetscape improvements as a conceptual condition of their application for the URT as well. A demolition permit has been issued to host trucking and excavation, and they tentatively plan to start work the end of this week, so that'll be occurring soon. The property will be fenced in, so all the demolition construction, parking should be within the fence. And they're not planning to block the alley or any off-street parking during the demolition phase. The construction is limited from 7:00 to 10:00, that's 7:00 AM to 10:00 at night, which is in order as the standard, the standard city noise ordinance. And they will use water to avert any demolition dust. They have not completed planned review for the new development at this time. So does that make sense to everyone? Does everyone know which area we're talking about? The former bank spot with the drive-through tellers. So that will be developed into a four-story apartment, condo.
With no parking.
No additional parking. They're not required to.
But they have parking for the tenants, hopefully.
No, they're not required to.
There's no requirement downtown to do that.
So who's parking decks there?
Sorry?
I just, I mean, who wants to rent an apartment that has no parking? Or maybe none of them downtown do. They don't know.
A lot of them.
Less than we know.
Yeah.
That's why they pay for a part of where we are. That whole side.
But what I get, what it is, like, you know, we have less parking anyway here in front of the library. You know, what if people said, would be complaints that you have less, so people do, they might get better ahead now.
That's very frustrating.
Yeah.
This has gone to PNC already.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, it's not a requirement downtown.
I just, I
Yeah, it's not a requirement downtown.
It doesn't, it's not a problem, though.
I understand that. I know, but everybody that, I'm not being, everybody who lives next to an apartment, you know, a building that's been rehabbed is thinking the same thing. Yeah. Okay, so it's not new. It's, I'm sorry, it isn't, it's new to you, but it's not, for everybody that doesn't.
We're just concerned for public libraries.
Well, these are things you can do. These things you can do is make sure that, you know, check if people are observing the, you know, the two-hour, and, you know, call, you know, call PD if they're not, or there's, you know, they have the, I would develop a relationship with the, there's the, they're called ambassadors, not the ones that work for Downtown Partnership, but they work for the city, and they go around and get tickets. So make sure that you have a relationship with them. And if, you know, people are, you know, not observing the two hours, but it, again, not trying to be flippant, it does work itself out. I mean, we have a whole school that ended up showing up across the street, and it didn't hurt the parking here. So I'm just saying, you know, you could ask, but I don't know if you want to do this, and I don't know if the city would permit it to limit the parking around the library to, like, on your sides to maybe an hour. But, but I don't know if you're going to do that, because now you're inconveniencing potentially your own patrons. So, you know, those are just things to think about.
We did just some parking in our lot.
As well, but make sure they don't. Yeah, you need to make sure of that, too.
Several years ago, several years ago, we had a meeting, Amy and I, and a couple of local people, including a person who at least then owned that lot. And we, we got to talk about this, and we threw out our idea that that'd make a nice place for a parking ramp with a approach that came over the alley into the library.
Oh. An elevator pit, right?
Thank you. You got to think.
So you want to watch, you want to watch the plans. No, seriously, we did that.
Didn't fly, right?
I did, I did see the property fenced when I came to San.
Yeah, it is.
Just real quick to know, I'm going to take some credit for that, because two weeks ago, I reported the site to C Click Fix, and I come down here today, and it's been all cleanup mode. The mess along the curving was all cleaned up. I don't know if that had anything to do with it or not.
Mayor turned it in, too. That probably sent us email about it, but no.
But maybe one other quick question, though. Will this include any redo of Main Street out here, the curving sidewalks? Or just a
Not, not necessarily. No, not necessarily. No.
These would be the next
Yeah, and not
I've been reporting that to my aldermen.
Yeah, a person building a building doesn't also get a new street.
Well, for the good of their building.
Yeah, I will say that Main Street has been, you know, up all the way to Palmer, where it got very damaged and their construction has been a discussion, but that doesn't mean it will be next on the list. Probably, especially not until this building gets rebuilt. But, but, and, and of course, there will likely be construction of Third and Fourth Street coming to here, that it comes to Harrison, though. That's the, that's the contract, the federal contract, because Harrison, but that Main Street is a discussion. So maybe this will help propel that along.
So we'll have 104 library memberships, so we're our members.
That'll be great. We'll definitely do outreach.
Yeah, I mean, you might look at, you might think about, yeah, you might think about if you, you know, but the consequences of limiting parking in front of the library to an hour, that could have, that could backfire on you. And I don't know if the city council would approve it, but something to think about. I wouldn't do it for any less than that.
Sure. So we'll probably, most likely, just see how it goes.
Yeah, it goes.
And monitor it for the first six months a year, and then see if we need to pursue any alternative venues options.
Are the easy market rates apartments for mixed?
I'm guessing, I guess, I'm guessing market rate. I don't know. I really was not, I had heard something about this, but when the fence went up, that was something that was, I hadn't, so I don't, it doesn't sound like he's submitted plans for approval to the city yet either. He still have to do that. I mean, they have to obviously be approved because they have to be looked at for, you know, setback, and does it meet, you know, all the requirements of, doesn't meet all the requirements that it, that are required to build a building. So, and I know that hasn't come before council. I'm not sure the plans would anyway, but it hasn't come before planning a study either, I'm sure. Because I would have, I always read their stuff.
Anything else, Jeff?
The only other update from the director's report is just some updated numbers for the Teen Summer Brunch Drag Queens in King's program scheduled for June 27th. We're up to about, so I just wanted to share that information with you. And there were about four or five that came directly to the Board of Trustees. I'm happy again to forward those to you if you would like.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to.
Yeah, of course, absolutely. And then I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the report.
Jeff, I, you mentioned, congratulations, it's the tier three accreditation we got, accreditation we got. Just wanted to check, is it, is it, is it based on the public library standards of the state of Iowa, the tier three?
Correct, yeah. For the accreditation, there's, and each tier is based on how many of those you can meet. And we usually meet something like 53 of the 60 or so.
Yeah, so it's based on that, because I tend to read the public library standards document that they have on the state of Iowa, Iowa libraries websites. I wanted to, you know, check. The other thing, I just wanted to share, because last time I was attending the meeting online, and we could not hear each other. I mean, I could hear you, and you could hear me. And you did mention about Google Translate, and there were issues with the translation. And I wanted to share that, an example to see, and probably you all might have seen it already, was the Rock Island Public Library is using it on their website. So I just wanted to share if you want to, you know, have to recall, you want to check. And lastly, Jeff, you also have mentioned about the RDFs that we are looking out for, for the Eastern Library. So my question was, do, if anybody is interested, do they come and get in touch with you, like, or, I mean, where do they make a request if they want to send it?
Right. Once that information goes out, it'll be available on the city website, as well as on the library website, and then we'll communicate that information out as well. And that'll include instructions on how to go through that process.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And we're still working on that behind the scenes. We're not quite to that point.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jeff, if I could throw something in here on the program. Got all the, it's got all the conversation. I'm sorry that you and the staff have been taking all that abuse. You know, I can understand people having different opinions on, you know, a particular program. But it seems like sometimes people go way beyond just expressing a positive or negative opinion. And I'm sorry that you guys are taking it wrong.
Are you seeing a rhythm to this? The same language, the same? Have you seen, so do you really want to go, oh, I've read this already?
Yeah, there've been, there've been a number, yeah, there've been a number that are not necessarily duplicative, but copy-paste type process. So there's a couple of people that have also reached out in several venues, or several avenues to get ahold of us. So they might complete a at least one instance we received one where they, they called and left a voicemail, then they also did a contact the Youth Services Librarian, then they also contacted the director, and then they also contacted the library board as well.
So is that, is that, you said 50, is, are they multiples or 50 different?
We dropped that number down a little bit to try to account for that. So it's about, I don't know how accurate it is. And then also, to be clear, some of these 65 or so that we, approximate number, there's a number that are not from our community as well. There are a number, because this has been picked up with some news media and also social media to, to not be from our community as well. We've seen with the contact the director, we have IP addresses, so we can see where people are contacting us from as well. So we know that some have come from Kentucky and Georgia and Indiana. A lot have come from our community as well, but there also have been some from elsewhere as well.
So when you say the staff has taken abuse, hey, maybe this, you've all read, sent this to me, and I just didn't read it yet. That's possible. But is that abuse like a personal, or is it just kind of around, strong opinions around this program?
Um, we have not filed any police reports yet.
I mean, like, you did this, or, I mean, I'm just kind of getting the flavor of this, is what I'm trying to get.
There's definitely been some personal attacks. I wouldn't say, we have not filed a police report yet, to my knowledge, on any of the comments. I'm not sure if anybody else would.
Do you and your staff feel threatened by that?
Oh, I have. But I can't speak for everyone. I'm not sure. There are other present that may care to, to share their opinions as well.
I'd be interested. It's not what we want.
I guess, related subject is, is there any concern about safety at the event?
Yes.
That's a very good question. Yeah.
And then, related to that, I thought I read something in the paper, one of the sponsors of that event has already pulled out of
There was another
Related, I think over in Moline.
Yes.
But it was a different kind of an event.
Yes. So good question on, to answer both questions, the other event that you're referring to, there were some similarities, but also differences with our event. And they also received some specific threats that I'm aware of as well. For safety for our event, we do have plans to have at least one off-duty police officer present, possibly two. And we are, we have had conversations, and we're meeting also with the police department again later this week, on either Thursday or Friday, to further up some plans. We have discussions as well. We obviously want to make sure that anyone coming to the event and/or coming to the library is safe while they're there. If we are going to receive any protesters, which is a very distinct possibility, we also want to support their rights, their First Amendment rights to protest, albeit within our behavior policy and the rules that have been established for the public library as a limited public forum. So we can designate where those protesters may choose to protest. And we're finalizing that information with City Legal at this point. We're going to encourage them to go to Fairmount Street if there are any protesters, to get them as far away from the entrance as possible, to make sure that people feel safer coming to the library.
Jeff, would it be helpful or desirable to have board presence at this event? Just my question, too.
Can't attend the event. We can't attend the event.
Because?
No, no adults that aren't accompanied by a child or a young
So if we find a kid, my grandson is visiting. He'd be happy to attend.
Registration's fault.
Well, I was just, I was just trying to think of ways to support the staff, the attendees, et cetera. If this is going forward, then it is on us to support.
You can attend the library.
Maybe we could go check out books at that.
You have a badge that says I could bring my board, because they love to do the right?
They have, they have to do together.
Yes, if I may, Trace, interesting, if I get it correctly, she said we actually have a hazardous event. Isn't that what you said? Someone threatened to remove their friends, maybe. Obviously, we got like a donation. It was kind of
There you go, yeah. Well, it's not going to be the latest controversy, but I think it's just, you know, it sounds like we're managing the event for the best possible outcome, right?
And I would, I would encourage all trustees to review and perhaps memorize our, our mission and our vision statement.
I got a tattoo in your
Which speaks clearly to, you know, not only, you know, having a wide diverse variety of programs and materials, but also in the vision that, that the public would see themselves in the collection and in the staff.
We're on target with that.
Yeah.
Anyway, one comment under report, Jeff, but really appreciate the library stories you included at the end. It's very interesting to see how the library is helping.
Good stuff. I might jump again to what Steve said. Just heard this morning about one of the DEU committees that had meetings in our library. And I would mention that is to access, you know, they mentioned about how, you know, there are different age groups that attend. There are some people who come with their walkers, or, you know, so they really enjoy being a part of our community and making use of the things that we have to do at least. So I really liked hearing that this morning.
That's great to hear. And the staff has been incredible with weathering this during this, during this time as well. They're doing a wonderful job of maintaining their integrity as we, as we look through this.
Thank you. There is?
Trying to be brief with, so there are several things in front of council right now, and coming later this summer. One, we are, they, there's a very large Destination Iowa grant that is out there. There will be one awarded to a large community and one to a small community. It's a match situation. And it's, it's up to, I think, the amount that they put out there was 15 million from the state. So we're looking very closely at things that are, you know, certainly things, and it's about, it's not about doing something in a 1970s neighborhood. It's about, you know, bringing people to the city. So we're, you know, looking at downtown things, obviously, because it's not a redevelopment, neighborhood redevelopment thing. This is about, you know, this is about tourism and getting people here and stuff like that. So in any case, so we are looking at that, talking to neighborhood partners, and that application will be going in. This will, the application process is kind of through most of this year yet. So it kind of bubbled up last month, and now we're all talking about it. So anyway, there's that, which we have to be working on. They, we have in front of us the, a proposal for a contract with Sasachi, who, to award a contract to them for the design of Main Street Landing. And so that is this, that vote is this week. We do have some city council members that are not sure about that. My approach and argument is I was in my 50s when I went to the My approach and argument is I was in my fifties when I went to the first meeting about Riverfront and I'm in my seventies. And I want something done before I'm pushing up Daisy. Literally, it's been twenty years.
The wheels are going.
To my colleagues who, you know, might be a little hesitant, but I hope this will go. So if you support that, you know, you can come and talk about it at, you know, at our meeting Wednesday night. In any case, that, that is happening. There was, I was part of the, the task force that looked at the different, the last proposal. And Sasachi has a very long history with doing parks that flood, Cincinnati's Park, you know, Riverfront Parks. They're also working with HR Green to get our flood study. They're one of the partners that work as part of this group. So I think it was a really good choice and they have done some wonderful things. So we will see how that goes. Also, coming again to the council, probably sometime this summer is coming back to the question of turning our two-way streets, our one-way streets to two-way. That. Located because we also have. Dollars to rehab Third and Fourth Street from Telegraph all the way to Harrison, which we were allocated several years ago. And so the question is just turning any part of that from one ways to two ways, negate getting those dollars. I mean, it's a question and I don't know. And we're, all of this has been discussed, there were public meetings and staff is coming back with answers. But I expect to see that in front of us sometime this summer yet. It's not right now. Party in the parks are going fabulously and you mentioned that in your report. But yeah, it's, it's been a lot of fun. We've had two, they were well attended and I want to thank the library staff for helping me with some of the research I do for the thing that I do there for, for the, you know, for the events. And I wanted to throw one thing out. I was sort of inspired, now I don't have any kids, right? So I never, only graduate, high school graduation I went to is mine, my sister's and my brother's. But I was really inspiring on Facebook, I was your daughter and others. But the graduations that happened in downtown Davenport. Last month, which are the first of June, which, you know, they have not been occurring in downtown for many years. They were over at the, you know, at the, they were over at, across the river. I think this is a kind of a wonderful thing and it felt very inspiring. And there were seven thousand people downtown, according to the school, that came as the different schools came. So, and I've said this to the downtown partnership, I think this is a huge opportunity next year for, you know, people are getting their pictures made everywhere. You know, their, their families down here, is there anything as a downtown we can do to sort of say, hey, I mean, this is bigger than a convention, right? You know, so that, I mean, there's, I don't mean there's financial opportunities, there are, you know, for restaurants and stuff. But just the idea of sort of celebrating our young people, you know, in our downtown altogether, you know, as they, as they kind of roll through the graduations. And I guess they staggered, you would know better. They staggered them throughout the day. So just when we're open on Saturdays, I think that's when they were, right?
It was, yes, yes.
I don't know, I think there's a party there or something.
And you say it's all right because they were all taking photographs, you know, like Gira and QCCF and, you know, things like that. So all the area photos were in.
Downtown.
Downtown. And there was a little bit of tiny bit of an objection from some of the parent community was because we were issued, it was okay with me, but other families, they had long, bigger families and we were issued six tickets only. And that was a huge objection from a lot of families. But, you know, it happens in big cities, we're not used to it. So that was one objection, we loved it, it was.
Exactly, exactly. So maybe they could think of doing a broadcast, maybe next year they could, you know, like do a big, you know, have more people, have overflow and have a big screen or something, I don't know.
And they did do a live telecast outside, they did have a live telecast, but people were saying, oh, well.
Yeah.
In any case, but that was fantastic, we loved it.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Maria. Okay, moving on to new business, discussion of the bulletin board slash community board posting policy.
So this policy is just up for review as part of a three-year cycle and staff of leadership team have come up with some options to modify it a little bit, to make it a little bit more accurate. One, one thing is to consolidate the title, so it's just community posting policy. So it includes bulletin boards and then any other location inside and on the library grounds that we would choose to post anything. So there are a couple of changes in here. You'll see the redlined items are those. One thing to point out is the fifth bullet point downward, it says no signs which advocate political beliefs, religious beliefs or other belief systems will be posted. We felt that we need to remove that because it goes in contrast to the Bill of Rights, the library Bill of Rights that we indicate that we do prescribe to in that very first sentence. We believe that it'll be covered under other areas if there is anything, that new sentence below it will cover anything that's illegal, obscene, that'll allow us to be able to still deal with situations like that. The other thing to put, to notice about this policy is it's written as a policy and a little bit of a procedure. Usually the policy is the board's going to say, hey, you shall allow a space for postings and then we need to make sure it fits these requirements. The procedure is then the library is saying, okay, well, how are we going to actually do that? Here are the steps to go through. In this case, so we have some of those steps that are included, like that very first bullet point where it says all material is hard to be approved by the assistant director, community outreach supervisor or branch supervisor before posting. But we find that's helpful in some policies to be able to be able to communicate that more easily for patrons that are interested in that. And other areas. We also wanted to specify the thirty days so that we don't, because we do have limited space, we're not going to have too much that just ends up on there for long periods of time. I think that's about it in a nutshell. Are there any questions or concerns on that? And this is again, just discussion at this point.
Two questions, one is as to with the political science. I guess, is the bulletin board big enough or how do you control such that that doesn't take over everything, considering that there are lots of people running for lots of things?
Right, so we still, we still do say for the, we'd still be covered under the political parts, we wouldn't have to put those up at all.
Oh, I thought so, we have to put those up because of the library.
Is it political?
Political beliefs, not necessarily running for office, that's covered under the media policy.
Okay, yeah. I didn't, yeah.
And there is limited to space, so we would then use our discretion on what we prioritize, but still not be discriminatory.
And the first bullet point, as you mentioned, what's approval is, is by the assistant director, community outreach supervisor or branch supervisor. And then down on the very last bullet point on the first page, signs for library contractors or vendors may be posted on your library record. Did you intend that to be different than the assistant? I'm not quite, you know, just curious if that was what you intended, I.
No, I think that's just what was in there previously. I'm not sure if anyone else is able to share some context on that one.
So Jeff, if I understand right, the first one is, as Steve pointed out, all materials would be materials like, I'm not hypnotizing, but promoting or talking about a program.
Yeah, we're talking about flyers.
That would be the flyers. And the last one, as Steve mentioned, like sign of library contractors or vendors, now that deals with actually work that is within the library or outside the library?
Yeah.
Would that be those signs, like, you know, work going on?
I believe historically that's what this was meant to address, is that we had a renovation occurring. For example, they would have to get permission before they put up their signs doing construction on the facility.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, moving on. Next item, new business is discussion of the behavior and loitering policy.
So there are two policies here and the reason we're discussing. Is because of a couple of related points. First, the behavior policy and then also the loitering policy. The first thing on the behavior policy is specifying the eating or drinking. We're, believe that, we think we can open up eating or drinking in the library, except in special collections and major space areas. Right now, there is no eating or drinking anywhere in Maine. And there is designated, there are two designated spots, spots at Fairmount and at Eastern. One is the book nook and then also the other is the cafe space at Eastern. We believe that this is a better change for our patrons to be able to open up the library for more use of the library. We believe that there have been eating and drinking that are already occurring and we're cleaning those messes up as they occur. And we think it's just being responsive to them. Worst case scenario, we can always roll it back if we find we have significant issues in the next six months to a year, that we then need to enforce that again. And again, the eating and drinking right now currently, drinking is allowed inside the library anywhere, provided there is a covered beverage, which includes a soda can as well. So that's the part for food and drink. The loitering part, there have been discussions that this particular policy seems a little bit too focused on addressing people experiencing homelessness. And it might be perceived as being a little bit too discriminatory. So any loitering concerns can actually be addressed through the existing behavior policy. And so the proposal, although this loitering policy is a red line, the proposal would be potentially eliminating the loitering policy completely. Because everything would be addressed in the behavior policy, because that's the prohibited behavior is if somebody is harassing somebody, if somebody is soliciting bums, if somebody is sleeping, if somebody is fill in the blank, it's generally covered under the behavior policy.
Well, one, I see that you, the only thing I see that jumped at me is probably you don't allow smoking on library grounds, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's not in the behavior policy. And I know that is sometimes an issue in front of the library. And I don't know who it is, I don't care whether they're, you know, anybody, you know what I mean? So I know that, I know that's an issue, I know that's an issue for your library because I think you have no smoking sign. So that shouldn't, and the people who were sitting there doing it might, I don't know the status of their bounds.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. And generally what we've done back and forth on the, something that's against the law. It, we just don't have that statement in there because it's against the law, so of course it wouldn't be allowed. That's one thought process, but it might benefit us to add a statement in here saying anything that's against the law and then.
It's not illegal to smoke out on the street, so. It's the law.
But we don't govern the street at all.
Correct, but what I'm saying is. Illegal activities, unless it's in. So you have the right on your grounds and you're. Just saying, I don't, you were saying about it legal, but it's completely legal to smoke on the street. So, but the problem has been people sitting in, using your area as a smoking area, sitting on your property, using it as a smoking area, I think.
Well, and we, we do have a no smoking policy, it's just not included in the behavior policy, so that might be another one that we want to.
Well, and, and, and it could apply to your other locations.
It does, absolutely, that's exactly what it does, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, and there is no smoking allowed in library buildings or on library grounds.
And that includes the part. Next on the agenda is old business, first item there is approval of the Code of Ethics for Board of Trustees. Was discussed at the last meeting. Thank you, Tom and Sylvia. Is there any discussion? Only thing I would add is that I would, I would, it's been my expectation that trustees, existing trustees would sign this to start with. And after that, as people are added to the board or appointed or reappointed, we would have them sign then. Just wanted to see the little discussion. Okay. There's no further discussion, a call for the vote on the approval, motion to approve the Code of Ethics for the Board of Trustees. Okay, Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you, Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you, Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you, Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you, Craig?
Yes.
Thank you.
Malavika?
Yes.
Thank you. And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on their old business is approval of the proposed bylaws amendments. Those were also discussed at the last meeting. One of those in section seven will add. Phrase that the secretary would notify the mayor of the absence or if any trustee permanently moves from the city of Davenport.
Is that all, in the secretary's show?
Yes.
I've been derelict and due to any point on this. It's just under advice.
Two brackets for everybody's location.
Or if you're missing meeting, I inform it.
The next, the other item is. Has to do with the, oh, there's two of these. One of them is to clarify that board members may serve two consecutive six-year terms. And that if they are first appointed to fill a vacancy, that they can serve two consecutive six-year terms after they've completed that term for a vacated trusteeship. And then lastly, the item. In effect, someone was appointed one year into a vacated term. Yes, they could theoretically serve almost three terms. Yes, that's correct. And then also in section two of the terms of board members, if the president's term on the board expires with their term in office, previously said the board would serve, the president would serve as a ex officio member of the board for two more years, his immediate past president, changing that date on. Otherwise, that previous president would serve as ex officio of the entire term of the next president, which seems unnecessary. So anyway, those are the items. They have a motion to approve the proposed bylaws amendments.
So, Steve?
Thank you, Malavika, your second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. They have a motion, a second, is there a discussion? During the season, call for the vote. Motion to approve the proposed bylaws of amendments. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you, Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you, in my own voice, yes, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resident comments, I will forego those to the end. Have enough time for our board training session. And with that. Amber, thank you.
Hello. This is four members of our teen advisory board, so we invited them today so they can talk a little bit about what teen advisory board does, what they personally got from it, and then also just opinions they have about teen services. So they'll introduce themselves, real quick, we've got Bella, Holly, Megan and Isaac. So I'm going to pass it over to them, they're kind of just going to go down the line. Some of them will speak more, describe things, some might just write comments if needed. And I'll be right behind you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm starting. So hello, I'm Bella Cuda. I am going into my senior year, I'm a. I am going into my senior year, I'm a homeschool student that is dual-enrolling at Davenport Central High School to take stock classes, so complicated situation, but I mean, most things are. So I've been doing teen advisory boards since, I believe, it was in 2019, either like the end of my seventh grade year or the start of eighth grade, I was, I joined the teen advisory board. So I did a lot of volunteering from like then up till COVID, I was doing a lot of stuff. My favorite thing to do was the volunteering at different events. So we would just have the teens come in and we would help like prep things for all the children's events, or do things like that, just helping to teach how to make crafts and organizing things and craft kits for people. Then there's events for the teens as well, but there was one time I was, I was a party princess, I was Elsa at the winter parties. Yes, it happened twice, because it's for the frozen party and then for the Christmas party. So it's a great place to get volunteer hours, it's a great group of people to be around, it's a great situation for any of the people that are interested in the library or a way to get people to come to the library, because in high school, most people are looking for volunteer hours. So it's, the teen advisory board is really great, I've been sure they're doing everything they can to.
Hi there, my name is Holly Dahlman, and I recently graduated from Davenport North, after going to West for a year, so a little weird there as well. For me, I kind of had a bit of the opposite as of my suspicion, as I actually joined during COVID specifically. I can't remember the exact circumstances of how I discovered the program itself, but during lockdown, I was just, I was looking for something to get involved in or something to do, and I heard about this, and I just, it was so great having all these programs to attend every meeting. Basically, a lot of what UTAB consists of is monthly meetings. So usually maybe around the second, sometime like the second Tuesday of the month, or something along those lines, we went for like an hour, four and a half, and we discussed different opportunities and events, and we helped also just to break sort of come up with ideas for new services and programs we can offer the teen sector. And it was just really cool to be able to shoot these ideas and watch them come to fruition specifically. Like for myself, I, you know, I suggested a, like a writing club. I never actually had time to participate in that writing club, but it's just like, it was cool for all the other people that got to benefit from that. And, you know, for myself, I've always just loved the library, and so it's been really great to be able to go back to the community that has provided me with so much.
I'm Megan Strabin, I'm going into my eighth grade year at Williams, and I heard about it from my mom, because she used to work here at Public Library, and like they said, we basically just helped with programs, and like we volunteer for kids' programs, and like we helped with setting it up and teen programs, just help with it and then our meetings.
Hi, my name is Isaac Kinley, I am going into my first year at Central High School. I have been a lifelong, I've got lifelong love of library, and my mom used to work there for a long time. And so I was kind of curious, I wanted to speak on maybe reconsidering bringing back the, or considering bringing back the teen page program, and having like, you know, stock shelves and whatnot, and just help out around the library. Because all of teenagers, myself included, are out of middle school, are looking for jobs and places on, it would bring a lot of people into the library, and it's a good employment opportunity to teach important skills for a lot of people. And for people who value the library a lot, like teenager, teenagers who really spend a lot of time at the library, could be a good opportunity to really help library grow as well by having enthusiastic employees as well.
Interesting, because we've had library employees retire over fifty years of employment in those spaces. They usually started with ages.
Yeah, exactly, and just, I'd bring the years, that could build a lifelong career at the library.
I think there's also an interesting niche in the market as well, considering that most bookstores actually hire teens on until they're what, seventeen or eighteen? I know previously, I believe, that the page position was starting at what, sixteen? Sixteen, yeah. For myself, I actually was looking into getting a job when I was sixteen, and my first choice is I wanted to work at the library or around books or at a bookstore, but there was only one page position available, and that was filled, and so I worked at a video game store, which isn't a bad alternative. You know, I'm sure I'm not the only one who would love to be able to have that sort of opportunity. So being able to have a writer opening in that facet, I think would be really beneficial on a number of levels.
Any questions, comments?
You are wonderful ambassadors of your age, wonderful. And, you know, I do see, when you said that, I have, she graduated this year from Central. And it's you guys who've been cool then, instead of going to Starbucks to study. We have Wi-Fi too here, right?
Absolutely.
Right, so how can we get them here?
We have great resources, and a lot, it'll bring in more people to come to the library.
Exactly, exactly, so what a beauty. Do the ambassadors, they go there because they have the Wi-Fi and things like, and that's okay. Just see, if you have the investors to get all of them right here on Eastern, oh, you know, Fairmont for that. So, thank you.
Well, hi, I can attest to that, because I would come after, I would come to Fairmont every other day after school to study for my French class.
Exactly, and three votes to check.
Absolutely.
It's three, it's not just one, like you can take twenty at a time, you know? How beautiful is that? And then if you have a question while you're studying, you have the reference of the instruction librarians, right, there are three minutes.
I can't even like name how many different subjects I've learned about just from going down to the library. Pretty much every day, and then saying, you know, what books they have, or what's, what's interesting on the shelves, so.
There you go, there you go, it's beautiful, thank you.
There's always something like new and interesting going on as well, it's like, I need something to do, there's always, oh, there's like a craft program this day, and I know a few days ago, or was it last week, there was Jeff Stan's competition. And on Tuesday of last week, he had a silent reading party, so there's always crazy stuff going on, and it's all free to participate in. Just such great opportunities.
Thank you, lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, for work serving on the board of teen advisory board. You guys do good work, and, you know, it's brought some very good programs, program ideas to, to us. And we were just discussing the one, and was it, Jeff, was it fully booked, or? Yeah, so, you know, we got, we got some very good ideas from you guys. Thank you.
In fact, both of you mentioned that you're from high school, you know, just graduated, and you're going, you are going.
Yeah.
Right? You can talk, I mean, I can see this, like NHS, they need volunteering hours. So NHS needs volunteering hours, it goes under the national, the name is national, but that doesn't mean boys cannot participate. They have to open for boys, they need such advocacy, they need help with materials and things like that. National History Day, most of them have no idea that they can come here, you know?
Yeah, most kids don't really go to the library, which they could be doing, because there's so many great resources that we have here.
Exactly, and I, and I'm sorry, I say this because of Central, because my daughter's in Central, that's why I say I know and I see middle schools as well, because they have a student board council today.
Yes.
Student board council, just as high schools have a student board council.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just curious, and by the way, I spent my, my first job during my town library, so I think I was able to get in when I was fourteen or fifteen, but anyway, and so that's where I went and worked all through my teen years before I went off to college. I did have a question, so I'm curious about, for those of you in, you know, in, in sort of a school setting, a scholastic setting, is there any, is there any connections in the school library, because I haven't been a school librarian, I have no children, so I don't know any of what you do. But anyway, is there any connection within your school library, or virtual or whatever, that connects to the public library? Like posters, or, or something that would bring you here, or bring you to another.
I believe it was.
I was hurt. Sorry, I was just gonna say that, at least at Southlow, where I went from middle school, there unfortunately wasn't a lot, it was mainly just for kids, it would be National History Day, they would say, oh, if you want more information on this topic, because they almost never had like a lot of stuff there, then like go down to the library, they'll help you find information on whatever your topic may be, so that's pretty much the.
I get it.
What I was gonna say is actually, I haven't attended a group largely this year, but I went in near the end of the year to look through, where I was supposed to turn on my computer, so officially roll there, and it stopped in the library, and they were actually promoting the summer reading program for the Forbes libraries, actually, they had like this, they had actual like physical reading logs, and pamphlets of information, they had like an actual like sign. So it was just like, hey, like they're actually promoting that, so I thought it was really cool to see.
And I don't want to put Emily on the spot, but if she'd care to share any additional information about some of the partnerships with schools and others, so there have been a lot that their team are working on.
Yeah, so at the end of the school year, right, we all of the, we dropped off for the materials at all of the various schools, special ones. Different, different, from the elementary ones. And we also aim for a specific to, because our library is probably most closely because of her focus in middle and high school.
Yes, which is a program, so initially, when Emily was the teacher librarian at Smart, it was a program initiated with Lexi, she was the team librarian, and then I expanded it.
I told all my friends, they're like, what do you mean, the library comes and brings books and has a program at your library every month? And so you ever expanded it then.
So we are, right now, we're at Smart and Williams and Wood. We were at Fuzz Little briefly, and we haven't been there for the last two years. Maybe I'll come back though. And then occasionally, every once in a while, the high schools, those are usually smaller sessions, like a book club or something like that. But the, for Williams and Wood, Smart is a good one a month. It's a non-traditional book club, so like I bring public library books. We don't all read the same book, they just talk about what they've been reading, and we do some sort of reading activity. So it's just a kind of a place for those students that are into the culture of reading, to kind of get together and potential librarians to be able to connect to their favorite readers in their school. And then we also do Battle of the Books, both in elementary and high school, so that's a big event. Kind of like a trivia contest with the nominees for the Iowa State Awards, so. And I need both important we raise for ways that we can collaborate on different things. We brought group reading logging for the summer reading program to the summer learning sites for this summer, so most of the elementarys are participating that way, at their summer learning sites in our summer reading program. We also do first grade visits, just off the teen topic, but we, we did those with the Owl this year. We went to, visited with all of the first graders at all of Davenport schools. We also have connected Davenport schools with our online overnight catalog through Sora, like Libby for schools. And so without having to have a library card, that they can all access grade level appropriate materials through Sora.
Hi, by my bed, Amber came to the open house last year. We went to three high schools, when they had the open house for middle schoolers coming into high school, and quite a few parents were not aware of what all you guys do, as well as what we offer, and the high schools have now extended that, in the upcoming year, we can go to more nice schools and get that. But I, I did have a question for you guys, and anybody. How will your friends come to know that there is a teen council in the library, public library?
Mention it to your friends, tell them about that. Oh, well, if you're, if you're interested in the library, and if you want to help out and support the library, there's a, there's, that you can join, and I know a couple, I just told a couple of my friends about it, they jumped in.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
For me, I would just be like, hey, there's this event going on that I think you'd like, when they would have like different parties. And so I would have my friends come with me, and then like if they enjoyed it or whatever, then they'd sign up for the email list. And then I had two friends that were in it for a while, I feel like before, or like after COVID, a lot of my friends and me have just been very busy with other things, we haven't done it as much. But yeah, before COVID, I had two of my friends and I were here for like most everything, and then I did have one of my friends come to one of the parties that they had recently. I brought, I brought my friends, so that's the main thing, I'm just like, hey, come with me, and then have them join the list or whatever.
Thank you. We'll be back up to president's comments. Oh, we lost him. Okay, anyway, I recognize Maggie for her years of service on the board of trustees. She having other things to.
She had to jump off the call.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. She told me she had to jump off to have another meeting.
Yeah, anyway, I guess I maybe should have stuck it in when I was explaining it, but anyway, we want to thank her, and we have some certificate and a card, and so, and a gift, so we will.
Well, that's something to include.
Lovely parting gifts, I was gonna walk, I was gonna walk up to the screen and virtually give it to you. I will, I will drop that off. We'll, we'll get it. Anyway, if there's nothing else to come before this forum, except the motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Tom, your second.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Second to adjourn. Call for the vote? Oh, that vote is, Maggie's gone. Okay, Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
Thank you, Craig?
Yes.
Thank you, Malavika?
Yes.
Thank you, Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you, and Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting, oh, my own vote is yes, motion carries. The meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone for your time, appreciate it, and that's all I can say, thank you.